Alright, so everyone should have gotten a copy of our agenda for today. I think most of you know Sarah and Paul. So I was just gonna real quick go over kind of a background project, just to get you up to speed a little bit. I know you're both familiar with it, but. The other things that we wanted to discuss, Mike Richard and Weston Sampson put together a scope. Speaking of devil, well, it's different mic actions, Mike Lizzie just jumping on. Mike Richard put together a scope and fee for, you know, site selection review. So he'll speak to that when he's able to help on. And they look at what is proposing and if it makes sense. So really quick, I'm just gonna run through the background on this. You both, you're, well, everyone's familiar, current highway garage, current fire garage. I'll run through kind of the options that were presented. So back when, you know, the team hired OPM, City Point Partners. We were looking at what's I'm calling alternative A here, which was let's alter the existing highway garage, certain fire garage, build a new highway building over on Chester Road. Now, that was the initial idea and then, you know, we, we got a certain distance along. Weston Sampson did a feasibility study looking at, you know, what the, the relative, oh, Mike.
Sorry, I'm late.
No worries.
Yeah, yeah.
Weston Sampson did a feasibility study looking at whether or not it would be cheaper to actually demolish the existing highway garage up the state road. And build a new facility. It turned out it would be. And at that point, you know, I think it'd been facing, I think about nine months of pretty consistent price escalation due to the pandemic. And so the ultimately the committee decided, let's go in a different direction. Let's look at this consolidated building. Or what I'm calling alternative C here, Chester Road. So that is, that's the option that was looked at this fall. And then of course, at the November special town meeting, we were looking to potentially fund that through schematic design. Obviously that didn't work out. So here we are again. And we're looking at, well, Mike will be able to speak to this hopefully a little bit. A scope for, for kind of narrowing our options and identifying, you know, if there are any sites that were overlooked in the initial review of, of options that we should come back to. And then, you know, C, hopefully we'll be able to kind of wrap that up prior to annual town meetings. So at annual town meeting, you know, we'll have the next step in the process, ready to present certain the now.
Yeah, I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
So the townspeople said no more money to Weston and Sampson. Basically what they said, am I correct?
Well.
And here we are dealing with them again. Why is that after they voted down?
Well, so this, this is a question, but you know, what I would say is they said no to money for Weston Sampson to remove through schematic design proposal that we can discuss. You know, what we've asked Mike and Jim here is, you know, help us look at what other things we're watching. That was the priority of yours. And, you know, have a built one there. So I mean, it's a little bit of a different piece, but I.
I was asked that question. I want to answer the people. That's why I'm asking it.
Absolutely. Okay.
Yeah. Because I'm new.
Sure.
You've kind of skipped over, you looked at the fire department going where the highway department was. And then you said because of escalating prices, it looked like it might be better to do a combination of both buildings at the highway site on Chester Road.
Sure.
I, I have a little bit of trouble grasping that financial decision. What's the big change? If you, is it because you have two buildings? Or was there something else?
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Right on that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Mike.
So at the time this was all happening, what happened was the number one, price of steel went, I mean, completely through the roof. If, if I, I wish I had a chart. I can show you. The spike is just out of the astral model. So the price of steel went through the roof. And while it's down considerably from what it was at that point in time, it's still up seventy-five percent. And again, it's rising again. It's up seventy-five percent from where it was in twenty twenty slash twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-one. So the price of steel is, is, it's not where it was at the peak of this, but it's still, it's still extreme, extremely high. To top it off, all materials. I mean, we saw the cost of timber. We saw the cost of the everything is through the roof. But the other thing that's influencing the price escalation is also labor. Labor is, it is people finding hard to staff their jobs. Labor prices have gone up. So it's a combination of all this, all these effects that has driven the price of the project up. And if I can speak for the town and I, I don't know if I'm going to say it exactly right, but the town was looking for cost savings measures. And by going with a combined facility, there are cost saving measures in terms of the, the, the construction effort as well as the materials that go into it. Because now you have, you know, things like shared utilities, shared walls, shared framing. There's a lot of shared spaces that go with that. So there is savings with it.
Did you estimate what the savings percentage was? I'm a financial guy. I'm like, questions like this.
Don't recall estimating the, the, the savings that was we went, we went, we walked through it with City Point Partners that there is savings. I don't remember if we ever came up with a number of what that savings was. There's definitely savings in the combined facility.
I, I can see that, but.
Yeah.
Right. There's, there's things that aren't necessarily hard costs that are, you're lacking with that consolidated facility all the way up on Chester.
Yeah, because I know there was a lot of concern about the fire department being that way.
Right.
Being in that location. And, and I also had one in my mind saying, you know, I could see the savings, shared walls, shared bathrooms. Well, not shared bathrooms, but some things. I know that there's a problem with water up to that area that you'd have to deal with, but because I'm always a what-if guy. And I know what happened to one of the towns here where there was a fire, I believe, at the highway department or something and all the trucks got lost. My only concern is there's also a risk of having everything, all your eggs in one basket. And how do you predict? Obviously, this building, I, I believe the code for the state is if you're over seven thousand square feet, you gotta have sprinkler system. If you.
All right. Well, there's, there's two different, there's two different things. Is one is, one is five thousand. The other one is, is actually seventy-five hundred. Yeah.
Yeah. So which one does this fall under?
Ah. I believe it's, I believe it's seventy-five hundred. Yeah.
So these two buildings together roughly, how many square feet? If you combine them, obviously over seventy-five hundred square feet.
Yeah.
If you had single buildings, would they be over seventy-five hundred square feet?
I don't recall. We haven't done the space program on it, so.
The only, the only problem I can see was several buildings. Several sets of overhead doors, several heating systems and several electrical hookups. All of a several ties into a septic system.
Well, wouldn't you have to have the same number of overhead doors? Whether they're combined or not, because what are you saying? The fire trucks and highway trucks are going in the same door.
Well.
Maybe the system's gonna be bigger or more expensive. I mean, if you have one building.
But I don't want to get into that kind of depth, but you know, I don't think there'd be any change in overhead doors. And I think they all have to have their, their own entrances, their own separation and everything.
You get a better price when you buy twenty doors and you do ten doors at a time.
Well, if you build a building long and you pull the trucks in back to back, you've got two sets of overhead doors for the fire department.
Are you saying a front door and a back door?
No, you'd have two doors up here.
Okay.
And they back in. And if now, if you change that, you can go to two, three buildings for the fire department. Two doors aren't gonna make the grade.
And they'd be five. And they're about fifty-five hundred dollars a piece.
Yeah, especially to for saving heat, putting in automatic doors. So absolutely. When you pull out the door, you push the button, the door goes down and you're going. Now you we have to stop, get out, go back, close the door, get back in the truck. We're moving done.
So do you remember these prints that I got first got on the Buckland fire or Tutfoot? Remember those? You, does that ring a bell? With the common area and the highway and that.
Yeah, that was basically what this.
Okay, so I call Kentucky's the buildings. You can purchase all of those buildings with the siding and the roofs for two hundred and nine thousand dollars right now. And you can purchase them as a town because they told us that last meeting, they, that towns buy their own building. The concrete is a hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
The concrete for the pad?
No, no, for all the floors and the, the ramps.
Well, that's what I'm calling the pad.
Yeah, okay. So yeah, for your, you get to include your footings, you know, for steel and a wall four foot around it. So your building's up higher. You don't have to buy a taller building.
And it's with, not only that, if somebody backs into it, I guess. So looking forward, just because I go, oh, they do this all the time. They ask them roughly, you know,
and I called that Kentucky still building and his name's Zach. He'll tell you, I, we're all certified, we're engineered. You can do it this way and it's legal to do so.
What is the cost on that, Jeff?
They can.
What was the cost for the cement?
Thousand, Paul, the cement was a hundred and nine, a hundred and forty-five thousand. I'm sorry, I grabbed it wrong. That was poured labor at bigger than prevailing wages.
Yeah.
Everything's prevailing.
How big a building are you talking?
Um, this was, the highway was eighty by one thirty. And the fire department was fifty by ninety. With five doors. And the doors were fifty-five hundred a piece. And the windows are eight fifty a piece. And of course, I don't know how many windows they need.
So is that two separate buildings?
That was three separate buildings with a common area for meetings and restrooms and a shower. So with the fire, the fire department could come in and use it, or they could come in and use it. That's.
Yeah, I don't mind that. So.
That gives you one septic, a shower, you know, male, female, two bathrooms.
I would add. I would add, we, we was not out of line to form a trouble committee. And investigate that further.
Yeah, well, it's.
I think I got everybody off track. I just, I just had to understand how you got from the original plan to there. And then the other main thing that came up at the meeting that kind of floored me was you did have a demo, a model on B that said, you know, it's going to be eight hundred and fifty-one thousand to do the spec, the garage on Chester Road. And then you went into this option C and all of a sudden there was on page five of that proposal. Alternate C got up to eight point one million and I went, what? How did we do that?
Started out as two point nine million. When we first started investigating this.
I know it's clear to everybody at the meeting when you use the.
Well, we never got a chance to go to town meeting with it. And every time we got put off, the price went up and up and up.
It went from two point nine to eight million?
That's correct.
I think one issue too.
But we're not talking two years here either.
Yeah, I've been, what's that, seven or eight?
Yeah, I've been working on this for seven or eight years.
I got a free blueprint in the garage.
So I was just looking at the package that was in that package.
Yeah.
I think you need to have hard numbers too, because like Paul asked, but with the savings, you don't know. So town meeting comes along, there's not really any numbers and people adults want to.
No, and I think that that's the object that we're trying to get to here. Exactly.
Yes.
What doors are you looking for? What building are you looking for? If you get a building for that price, how about it? Like why, we, we'd be designing the same building that.
The building.
Yeah, yeah. So there's no difference there. The question is, is, is is that apples to apples about what you'd be getting? And I think I have, I have my reservation just because we competitively did these all the time and we know the pricing that comes in. And something's not adding up is, is what it is. So. And I only did a phone call, like, so I. Yeah. I just, I'm curious. I want to know other options and why. That's, that's what I do. So yeah, no, I, I'll with you. And I think that's the object of this committee, right? Is, is what do you need? What can you afford? What do you, you know, what are you going to get? Right? That, like I said at town meeting, if you can only afford a one-car garage, that's what you can build. You can build an eight-car. We know we need a fire station. We know we need a highway garage. But my mind, fire stations got priority at this moment.
Yeah.
And I don't think the town could swing them. I really don't.
You have a group of people living in town that's taxes has gone up, up, up.
Well, I think that's one of the things we have to definitely clarify. And, and again, this is the next time we go to a town meeting, we better have something to present them that demonstrates where we are, like what the financing is, what the state grants are going to be, what the costs are going to be. Why we are doing it to begin with? Is this a safety, government relations? Cost savings? We need it because the buildings are falling down or inadequate? And, and what are the improved services going to be for the town? And we have to convince everybody. And, and then we have to be able to show the ideal thing. I think we hopefully all agree that we have both. And, and what would it actually affect on the taxes? Because I heard some things at the that special town meeting that just didn't make sense to me with a guy saying, you know, we just waste money and we spend money and taxes are going to go through the roof. I don't know what the taxes are going to be unless I know it's what the cost is going to be, what the savings are going to be. And what we need to go out and finance and what are the annual payments going to be? And what that'll translate into a little rate for the town? And, and we have reserves built up for building things. So we can look at that. And we should be able to tell people this is what it's going to cost. But if we don't do it now and we wait five years or something falls down, this is what it's going to be. And there's always going to be people that are want to do nothing and don't want their taxes to go up, period. And they don't care about what's happening in the future because maybe they're like me, they're so old, it will be here.
But Paul, what do you, what kind of savings do you think they would get by putting in the building? Just the cost of the heat, maybe the lights? Doesn't, there's no other savings.
Well, there's got to be labor savings.
Oh, you mean when you're building it?
No, not that. No. In the way they operate now, I, I think I've heard about the way that it's salt shed and sand and that isn't the right size and you got to go in and it takes you longer to do things. And there's going to be things with the fire department, but I'm sure if they have better facilities, there'll be savings there. And we've got to do something now because I think I've also heard that that fire building that we've got now is I think it used to be a service station and we've made do with what we've got. And maybe that refers to that thing you were talking about in that town where they have a leased building.
Yeah.
Probably why they did it because they needed to do something. They took, so in other words, there, there are going to be savings and maybe we have to do something with that fire building. I've often wondered what would happen if state came in and looked at that and said, this is your fire station?
So to lease a building that size, if you look at, I looked it up on the internet, it's seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Roughly, and you know, what the going rate is right now. That doesn't include your electric and your heat, obviously, but you're going to have to pay for that and pay the other. So I don't know how that would transpan.
So you think that's still the current lead rate?
Didn't say, yeah, oh, it was the other day. I looked it up. So what I'm saying, Paul, is that seventy-five thousand for twelve months. What would our tax base equal to that versus of owning a building? And can we do a lease purchase? And on, and those are things I think we need to look at for action. And you're more of an expert on that than I am. I mean, I understand numbers, so I'm set.
Yeah, I, I think I already expressed you that.
I know.
Towns, towns tend to keep buildings around forever. That's an exaggeration. Forty, fifty years. And, and you go, well, you know, if you'd have leases.
I won't be here in fifty years.
No, none of us.
The biggest problem we've got with town buildings in this town and once they're built, they never look at them.
Yeah.
They forget us.
Yeah.
This building right here is a good example.
Those nailed down hall.
Yeah, when, when we moved the town hall into this building, it went along and all of a sudden the, the heat wasn't working right. Well, nobody had done anything to the boilers. Rolling on twenty thousand dollars to fix the boiler. Pretty quick smoke detectors, the alarm system wasn't functioning. Because nobody had it serviced. So that cost another twenty, whatever thousand dollars. We gotta not only build new facilities, we gotta form a, a way that we can maintain what we've got. We've got to have some maintenance people on staff that take care of all these buildings.
Well, I think the town has come a long way in, in managing their assets. And I think you're right in what was done in the past. And hopefully all the things that we're doing now and in the future will take care of that. That's what I hope. And I think we're going that way, but I can't.
So I'm going to bring us back really.
Yes.
So, so I think, Mike, if you could speak a little bit to this kind of scope that we were talking about for the site selection. Because again, I think, you know, for us, the mission up until annual town meeting is to look at what are some of the other options that may have been overlooked?
Yeah.
And if there's anything worth revisiting, then, you know, we need to figure out how we go about doing that. And otherwise, I think at annual town meeting, we have to communicate why the original option that presented and took us, this the option that makes sense.
Yes.
So, so Mike, anyway, if you could speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So, so the object here is really to bring this committee to some type of consensus or, or identify what makes sense for the town, right? So the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to look at site selection. And we know some work has already been done in that regard, but I don't think that's been done with everybody here in the room, correct?
Correct.
So we're going to walk through that process and, and identify that, you know, what, what sites are available? What can we do with those sites? What is your, what I'll, what we refer to as a master plan look for you? Look like for you, right? And, and we can lay out the different options. You can put fire here, you can put public works here. You can put both of them at the same location at this site or this site. What is the phasing look like? You know, Jeff, you, you identified that fire is the priority. You know, does fire get built before DPW? And what does that look like long-term for the town? Because sometimes that phasing option is, is appealing. But if you're looking out for the community, long-term, that's probably more expensive for the town. So we can help you realize what those options are. And then I think I might get ahead of myself. We'll go through what I was going to say is we can help identify, you know, what are the other options that might be available? You know, you discussed the options and discuss, I'm sorry, you discussed the leasing. We talked about the pros and cons with that. What does that mean? What does that mean long-term? We can lay out that financial situation for the town so that you can see it all in front of you. The idea here is, is we, you need to support us, right? We got to come up with an option, the best option for the town that the people in this room can support. It might be not the option that you want. It might, you might say, I don't want to spend nothing, but is that really in the best interest of the town? So you can go back and you can say to the townsfolk that, that I sat through these meetings, I asked all the tough questions. I don't like it either, but this is the best option for the town. That's really what we want to get to here. Once we have the site and we have what that patient plan will look like, we'll lay out the concepts, what those will look like. I don't, someone over here said, we need to go to the town meeting with what does this project look like? And I know it was more involved than that, but you know, there's got to be a visual that people have to see that vision.
Correct.
What is this? What is being proposed? What does it look like? And we'll help you establish that vision so that you can see it and that you can show the taxpayers. So the taxpayers can see what they're voting on. With that, you know, we'll, we'll help with the outreach, you know, because, because there will be people that say this can be done cheaper, this can be done different. And, and we'll lay out, we'll cover, you know, you answer those questions. Well, you know, it's this much money for these reasons. And it's important that you understand this. It, it, it is. It's important that we understand it. If there's cheaper options, we're, we're all in, you know, we don't make any more money off of a more expensive building. You know, the cheaper option, the better. Anything that gets built is, is a win for us.
So.
I didn't really cover the scope, but I covered it.
One more question.
Yeah.
Through the, well, that proposal you had up there. And you showed the other towns that you've done buildings for.
Yeah.
I think without exception, they had what they called pole barns. So they said it's cheaper not to have a foundation. It's cheaper to have what they call a pole barn, a slab and then a pole barn. That isn't what you're talking about.
So the, the, we can explore those options for you. We have done pole barns before.
Yeah, I know. There, that was in your proposal.
We usually do, we usually do pre-engineered metal buildings. Pre-engineered metal buildings are typically the most efficient cost-wise for, for this type of operation. And the reason they're the most efficient is because of the long span that you can get for that, for that price. And that clearance is, is important to prevent damage to the structure, damage to your vehicles, you know, everything that you're trying to protect. It, it, it benefits by having a clear span versus columns. So, but we can help identify, you know, maybe there are some aspects that can be a pole barn or maybe could have columns that can make the, the building cheaper. There's different options that we can consider, but until we start laying out what does the space look like, it's, it's hard for us to say.
Yeah, the ones I specifically looked at tended to be more for the highway department where they're parking all their big trucks in it.
Yeah.
And, you know, they need a lot of facilities in there for washing, repairing, but they need height and all that. And I went, yeah. And some of the pictures you had of your various examples look good. And about, well, that's nice. I wasn't as familiar with this pole barn. I had to do some computer searching and understand it, but I did.
That's important building. They're all built with wood, most of them.
Well, no, the pole barn I'm talking about isn't wood. It's, it's, it's a steel. It was still steel.
Steel structure or old metal steel. I've never seen it that way, but.
Well, the pictures they had where they were talking about.
Yeah. I'm glad you said it because I never heard of that.
Yeah, well, it was.
Yeah, when, when I think of a pole barn, I think of usually a timber with the ones you're thinking about are pre-engineered metal.
But they were called pole barns in your.
If I could interrupt, if, if you went to town of Buckland.
Yeah.
I built a pole barn for the DPW. Three years ago, we built one structure that was a steel building that was used for maintenance and wash bays and just general storage, but for equipment storage, Sanders, plows, heavy equipment, we built a pole barn on the side of it, just to cut the cost.
Well, that's what I was thinking, that kind of pole barn. Yeah, that makes good sense. And we, and as we go through this process, we can help you identify, you know, what makes sense. How can we, you know, how can we, can we part and section things off, things off and go with a different type of construction?
Well, I know. Store my equipment. And it caused me an arm and a leg to heat it. You can insulate that building until you're blue in the face. But because there's no foundation under it, nothing to tie it to the ground, the air comes in underneath it and it degrades.
You had a slab, right? You had a slab in your.
I had a slab.
So one thing I want to make sure we, we get out of this is, you know, in that proposal, Mike, you talked about looking at four sites, right?
Yeah.
So what do we want those sites to be? Because obviously there's, you know, there's hundreds of parcels in the town. There's a small amount that are owned by the town. And then there's privately owned parcels that, you know, we talked about.
Well, I think one of the old locations is the old school.
So you mean.
Right up here.
Yeah, where the D building.
And I, I'm not sure the domain.
And I, I'm not sure of the dimension, but we own quite a ways up to the white church. I don't remember. Town, town. On the other side. Right, so we, we still have a lot there. Yeah, but we could have a problem. Trying to build on town, town. I don't know.
I don't either.
I'd have to go through that with the attorneys. But the thing is up there, I think it would be pretty expensive because of the last thing that I have to be doing. I don't think you gotta dig. When I dug up the white church, there was.
Up there.
Yeah, and as you come down through. They put a couple of poles up there and they blasted them on not going up church hill. So that's what tells me that there's hard rock up there.
And cuz it does come down along side to park there, that property.
Get your foot in tune.
Yeah.
And fill, bring in, fill the levels. You know, so you gotta actually.
Well, it's something to look at.
Yeah.
And I just think cuz we own it, it's worth.
But I, I feel, I feel you. We need a minimum of two acres. For an fire station.
Just for the fire station.
Yeah, because you need room for a building itself. You need room for volunteer parking. You need an area when you're training. So you can get out there and you have room to spread out.
Except.
Now we have to go whatever place we can find in town to find room enough to do any training. That puts us away. If we get an alarm, we gotta get back, or we bring all our trucks with us. And park everything, do our drill, and then bring everything back and put it in. So we need a little bit of land around there to work with.
Well, that was a big concern at the meeting was why had not having it on Chester Road. People wanted it more to the center of town where more people are.
Yeah.
So that was a big concern to keep order time, so.
When other towns travel a couple of miles, they get better fire.
You had the other night, it changed seven minutes in response time to the building. Isn't that correct?
No, without lights.
Yeah, you're trying to say he's not bright. I've, I've driven under a couple of times and find it around somewhere.
Yeah. Oh, but. Uh, if, if, if this site is potentially. A, a, potentially a feasible site, um, you know, whether it's, it's ledge or not. Um, you know, I, I know I said four sites, but I also said before, like. Well, again, if you want us to screen six sites, it's really not that big of a deal. It's not that big of a deal. From, now, Robins' field behind the old cemetery. There was five and a half acres there.
Yeah, if we could, if we could get that, that would be most ideal.
That would be an ideal.
And then you could put a light out there. When you come out, it'd be absolutely, there's five and a half acres right behind the cemetery.
So it looks like it's in a trust.
I think it's in, uh, his trust. He offered that to the town twenty years ago and they refused to take it.
Who, who is it?
Yeah, it's in a trust now because he's in a nursing home. He offered us that town, uh, that land twenty years ago for this much. We didn't pay.
Well, that goes along with when the dirt bike offered to run a.
House and.
I think.
Yeah. Straight and then behind all that, there's all this.
And that piece next to the cemetery could be the right away, right there, right out there. You just put a light there. You know, red light and call it a day. I'm, I'm just throwing out.
Sure, yeah.
I think that's, it's huge to find some parcels in the center of town because that's a huge source of contention. And I mean, look at yesterday. Or the last two days. I mean, you live on North Street, right? So worst weather in town, Chester Road. Worst weather in town. I mean, you couldn't get up and down Russell Road for two days. I mean. You know, you don't really want your.
Power, about power.
Yeah, but you don't wanna cut a tree out or a tree out of the road to get to.
We, we don't touch it.
You know.
You call us, we're taking a tree burning, we blow.
No, what I'm saying is if you can't make it to the fire station, that's a problem, right? You have a much better shot if it's on twenty-three. I lived on Harrod Road. I live on twenty-three. Life's much easier on twenty-three. It makes a huge difference. The location being on the main road versus.
Not that much of a difference. I mean, that little, what's it on? Hundred feet through there, that piece, hundred fifty feet to get to twenty-three.
Oh, no, no. I mean, it's much easier being off twenty-three than being like off on Chester Road or something. No, no.
Yeah, probably.
No, I think that would be a fantastic.
Build a drive, a driveway that you can.
Pass.
Yeah.
There's adequate water there for sprinkler systems and everything, not like Chester Road.
It's on the water.
It's on town water, yes.
Well, I know it's. Okay, yeah.
See, I'm on a well. Huntington Road is where the line changes. It goes to four inch and up through there. So if you had.
Don't be too sure yourself.
Well.
I've got a lot of water break up on North Street. And that pipe goes crazy up through there from four to six to four.
So you have other sites that we'd like Mike to potentially.
Well, he said two acres. I, I still about that place, which is almost, it's an inch, uh, one and three quarters acres. And. We thought, we could, we could look, we can look at it and, and. It doesn't hurt to look at.
But you're only talking the fire department. What does the, uh, highway department need for their? If he needs two acres, what do you need?
I got a salt barn area. Like, we put it up there and everything would be together at that point.
So you would have a separate building from the fire department? Is that what you're saying?
That's what they're talking about, correct?
Possibly, we'll, we'll. An option ball that I've wanted to throw out.
Okay, that's fine. I was having a hard time keeping up.
Doesn't that increase, sorry, doesn't that increase our price?
Not necessarily. You gotta look at the numbers first and see what you got.
I thought that's what we did.
I, I think it's fair to say that you'll have, you'll have an increase in, in price. Uh, how much that is, it's, it's yet to be defined.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other sites we wanna?
What was that site? What was naming it?
I'll, I'll get you.
I think we're gonna start looking for shortage.
Jeff, what about the, where the, uh, ice skating rink used to be there? Who owns that piece of land?
The Paxton Cross, right?
That's Watson Park.
Watson Park Cross. Yeah, that would be pretty hard to kid.
Yeah, I didn't know who that was part of the park or not.
I don't, that would be a quite a flight, I think.
Your town common will be up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, town common's not, it's not gonna be easy to mess with either.
And what about a cross from the white church where they park? Who owns that?
That's what I'm talking about. That's the old school.
Oh, oh, I thought you were talking about the pines.
It ranks on the right, yes. Not on the left.
The ideal spot would be that field out there. Uh, it's flat, not a lot of slight work.
Uh, yeah, I will say, you know, so Williamsburg, kind of Williamsburg, it's quite a similar process with the public safety building. And right off the bat, they ruled out acquiring private property because. It just, that just adds so much to the cost and uncertainty of the project. So that's, you know, that's, that's why towns usually default for their own property.
Right, but he might donate it, too.
It is, right, sure. Yeah, we could, we can help.
Can I ask one last question? If it all goes through with the two built, what happens to the old fire station, the old highway department? Has, has anybody looked at that?
You're being trucked down a road.
Right, why wouldn't you keep them to store our other trucks in? We got pickups out.
Nobody has, nobody's looked at it to give that answer. I'm not being. Mickey, I'm just asking.
No, I, I think people just have different opinions about it. Yeah, so, I mean. If, if you talk to former chief mater, he would tell you that, that current firehouse, the line, it's over the line on the property lines. It's like the building is not properly configured within the.
Shared separate system. Was?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Been like that for fifty years.
So, so anyway, some people are not a fan of keeping the building. On the other hand, you know, it's a nice, you know, it's a nice little garage for the breakfast side. Right on Main Street. You can see some value there, but it's true. No one's really talking about.
What you go to does to make it safe.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Didn't fall in yet after this snow.
Might find some stuff to buy. I don't know if that's a good idea.
I was saying, we got the, the Dodge truck, we got the fire chief's truck. You got the trailer, they're all sitting outside. They could go into one of them.
And the storage, right?
They could also.
Store a piece of equipment and my garage.
Yeah, cool.
I was just.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So really quick, before, you know, we've got about fifteen minutes left here. It sounds like we've got some ideas to give to Mike. Um, and Mike, I guess what we'll talk about is you coming back with some kind of, you know, proposal with more of the specifics in it.
Yeah.
Um, I know, I wanna make sure you have enough time. If say, if say within a week you were back here and then we were able to then move forward with something.
Yeah.
So, okay. Um, I wanted to pull up a draft schedule here. Um. We're looking at in terms of the route to town meeting. Right, so hopefully, and this, we have on here the twenty-seventh of March, but I'm wondering if. You wanna move that up a little bit? We can talk about it. We might wanna move the schedule so that, you know, we're all reconvening a little bit sooner than two weeks from now. Uh, so we can discuss that. Uh, one important part of this, I think we talked a little bit about community outreach. Um, so. You know, I think last meeting, we talked about having potentially two community meetings prior to the annual town meeting. Um, first one, which I have on here in about mid-April, would just be a kind of. Update residents on, you know, what we've been doing, what we've been discussing, and, you know, just kind of have a check in with everyone. And then a later one in May, we would hopefully have some updates from the work that Mike's doing. And something to present, um, you know, that we could be debating at town meeting in June. So, this, this is, obviously, this is a lot to get to fit in. Um, but I think it's important that we do the community outreach because clearly, you know, there's a feeling among some people that that was lacking. Leading up to the last, uh, special town meeting. Um, the other thing I know that Adam had wanted was to. Have an opportunity to actually have committee members go to the, the highway and fire garages. So, uh, I was, I scheduled that to be a little bit later in the season because.
Yeah.
We'll wait till they actually, uh, you know, it's warm enough to hang out in those garages.
It is nice out there.
I'm. I'm thinking about that April the tenth. Community outreach, we really won't have an awful lot to tell them, will we?
I think we'll.
Other than that, we're meeting.
Well, no, that, and that, uh, you know, potentially based on what Mike's, you know, comes back with next week, that we're looking to have this study. You know, that narrows down the number of sites. Um. So I, I think there's some significant things to talk about, and I, I also feel like, you know, we had, uh, a lot of information that, you know, we. We created last time around, um, that never got to people really. We had two open houses. We had, you know, the garages. We had a whole frequent ask questions document. None of that stuff got to people, but I feel like. Um, and I, I mean, to me, it's a two-way street, but you know, the, the, the fact is, it didn't get to people. So I think that's another item that we wanna share. But yeah, it's true. We, you know, it's, it's gonna be kind of a check in. Um, and not necessarily, you know, a chance for people to raise their hands and vote on something. But that'll come later, so.
I think that's a good idea to have the, let some of the people come in with their thoughts that we could all maybe trail.
We could get them like better than we did at the open house.
People?
I had to do it, the fire.
I, I have the most.
Yeah. They've got a whole bunch of Halloween candy.
Yeah, yeah.
Doing.
Is, is anyone?
One of the things. You're gonna dig out the NFBA stuff. I'm trying to get from the state that the building codes for public safety building.
I got it at home, if you like it.
Yeah, I like it, cuz we like to disrupt it here. Because it's a little different than the, either commercial or residential. And it's something we've got to look at, at least for the fire station, possibly for the highway garage too, because now there's a. Highway is first responder. It's figured as a first responder, you know. So it might figure in on a construction or remodeling or whatever. So these are all things that you, you folks should be aware of. So with, for the next meeting, we'll try and have all that stuff here.
Has anyone looked into available state and or federal grants for this type of?
Yeah, so, yeah, so I can talk, I mean, I actually, I just submitted an expression of interest for a small and rural town development fund grant. Um. You know, if. I will say, and this has been said before, it's challenging with these kinds of structures. There's not, uh, you know, it's like the. It's the vegetables, right? They just, the state just expects you to eat your vegetables. But that said, you know, uh, one of the other things we were looking at is community development block grant, you know, other communities have used that for these kinds of structure. And stretching costs. Um, and then, of course, you know, USDA, uh, Rural Development Division, they have loans. Um, so, you know, potentially, at least you could get, uh, you know, you did have to borrow for it, you would, and then have to. You would, you know, at least have a good rate. Um, so there's, yeah, there's, there's things out there. It's always just challenging, especially when we haven't gotten as far along as we want to. Consider it, you know, concept design, schematic, et cetera.
Yeah, they, they definitely gonna wanna know that stuff before they say, yeah, this is the rent. And we can get on, you know, the phone with, with your, your senators and, and. Walk through, well, I'm sorry, that, that's, we, 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 they could point out who, who we should talk to.
Sure.
Then we'll get on the phone with them. They can identify, you know, what might be the most appropriate grants for your application. Um, I did get a text from Mike Lizzie, his computer died, and it's, he's looking to get back.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to. Lot of dip that he must have.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, so there's, there, there's things out there and we, you know, with, like with everything. Always looking at grants and, and funding.
I work with some fantastic grant writers, and I mean, they get millions of dollars and, and grants for entire programs and. So it's definitely worth, you know, going after them.
Absolutely.
Cuz even if, sometimes you don't think you're gonna get them and.
So we'll get a million dollars.
I know, right?
Fifteen, we'll get it. What we have, what we have found is it's not like water, stuff, you know, or, or other things, it's, or. It's, it's a lot different. We typically don't find that kind of money for this type, these types of facilities, but. Um, I just don't want to mislead you.
Yeah, no, I, I think the more, you know. Having all those ducks in a row is gonna go a long way.
There's a lot of money out there though.
Yeah.
You're, you're a hundred percent right now. Um. Chris, right, a question about meeting three that we need to outreach. Is that like in preparation for?
Yeah, so.
Next meeting.
So one thing that, uh, Mike, you've mentioned that City Point can do is, you know, it made Kim available. And now she has a lot of community outreach experience, so she was gonna just talk with us about, you know, what's the best way to get this message out. Um, and then we can also kind of prep some kind of agenda for that April nineteenth, tentatively.
Yes, Kim and I talked about it briefly, and she's more than capable of, of taking care of that type of work.
Great. Uh, so, yeah, so if it's okay with everyone since, um, since we met on Thursday, um, and our next meeting. You know, going by the kind of bi-weekly Monday thing, wouldn't be until the twenty-seventh. Are we okay with meeting back here next Thursday at, at this time? Uh. Or is that not gonna work for you, Mike?
It works.
It, it, it does not work for me. I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was gonna say, Chris, Mondays are easier for me.
Okay, um, well, Mike, do you think we could, uh, move real fast and be ready for Monday, the twentieth?
Oh, gosh. Wait, is that, is that? That, that might be a little, a little quick, but I, I, I might, I might pull something together. Um, hold on a second. Some reason I thought I had another meeting that night.
You know, that, that might just be a little aggressive. Why don't we?
I, I do have another meeting that night, um. I'm wondering. Could we do? Wednesday, the. I would.
That's better. Doesn't interfere with my date night. Sorry.
Priorities, right, Paul?
What's that?
Priorities.
Yeah, I have a very. Uh, difficult spouse I have to deal with.
She said the same thing.
Well, she's right. That's what I have. I have to do whatever she says.
Okay, you're like head in the house, but she's the neck, right?
I don't know, I'm the head of one house. We don't believe that.
What'd you say, six o'clock? Uh, so. Did you, is everyone good to five?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty second. All right, anything else?
So it's gonna be Wednesday?
The twenty second.
March twenty second.
Chris, just one thing I was, I've been thinking of is that at, at some point. Both from an information. Sharing perspective. But also to find out how there's potential opportunities for collaboration, either in terms of. Grant application or, or just funding in general. We should. Start to socialize the idea of what we're doing with the, um, DOT. Uh, in that. A significant portion of our responses. Um, cover the Pike. And they're. Fairly impacted by what we do and they. There's probably a, the potential to sort of spin moving. The. Fire station potentially closer to the Pike and get them to either, again, co-sign on a grant application or help somehow with funding. I don't know. The other is, um. We should. Give some thought to. At least seeing. What opportunities there are to collaborate a bit with, um, Helltown ambulance because they're in dire need. Of facility as well. Um, so there's the. I've always discussed the potential. With them and with DOT. Or the thought is to involve DOT to move an ambulance closer to the Pike that would. Help address response, given the number of responses we have in our area with the rest areas as well. Not that I want to add any levels of complexity to an already complex project, but it. It might make sense at some point to, um, have some dialogue. With, um, the folk that Helltown as well as DOT, just to kind of. At least start to see, uh, if there's any interest in participation and with DOT, I think we want to try to. Figure out how we can. Get them to help us to put any of the grant writing scales in our favor.
Sure. Yeah. Any other thoughts from anyone?
I think, I think it's a great idea with the ambulance though, because that's more of a safety complex. Anything else? And there's more, more grants out there for that.
You know what it costs for an ambulance ride?
For, for what?
An ambulance ride?
Wow.
Three thousand. I just found out. Yeah, forty-five dollars a mile.
You're, you're paying Joanne that big of a? Why?
Actually, it only cost me a hundred and twenty-five because that's my medical plan, but I went. Forty-five dollars a mile. And a total bill of. Just under three thousand. So close now we're talking about. Holy crap.
I did, my buddy cost me ten, but in ten years ago to get formed from the racetrack. So you would have to. Man, what is now?
Here we are. Couple times. Uh, meeting minutes. No? Yes?
Yes. Or emerged.
Oh, the. Well, I think.
I made a more community custody, uh, snap.
Uh, any discussion? Uh, Gabe?
Hi.
Hi.
You know, I'm going.
Oh, actually, Jeff, you have to abstain because you weren't there.
Where?
February thirteen?
May happens longer.
Oh, that's. Yes. So you, you know what? It says accident next to my name. So we just have to move it. What did I do? It says accident next to your name. Yeah, let's get rid of the accident and stick here. And I, what was I called? Difficult? Difficult. I heard.
I didn't say anything about that.
That's what I heard.
I never heard that.
Oh, this is. Never mind. What am I doing?
We're doing now February twenty seven.
Oh, my God, I was like.
February twenty seven.
Second, any discussion? All favor?
I.
I.
Please calm down.
I'm just reading some of the words he shows. I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so, uh, audience participation. Seeing none. Uh, department reports. You wanna start, Dave? Highway?
Fire.
Yeah. It's a rough, uh, days for you.
It's been a park, right, Dave?
Just not as young as you used to be sometimes.
We're gonna start talking at some point about. Oh, sure, yeah. Join us. Don't be so far away.
There you go. Great fun to Mike. He goes.
Just, just experience.
Say something about her being difficult.
I never find it to be solved.
You haven't been around it enough.
I'll look under right to the end.
So how are you guys doing, Dave?
Oh.
Resting?
They're happy they can come back in to regular time.
Yeah.
And go home at a regular time. This morning I, uh. I informed Chris that last I knew, well, from every source, we had one person without power.
Okay, well, that poor person.
Um. But what I've noticed is that. Us. I forgot that there's more people. Outside of town also.
Yeah.
Than we always forget about.
Yeah.
You know? Or, you know, yeah, or, or aside. You have a small group of people over there.
Sure.
But they live on private roads, you know, but they still are residents of the town.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we could figure out somehow to get in contact with those people out there and inform them on what's going on.
Yeah.
Or, or what to, or who to call.
I'm wondering if they are on the reverse nine-one-one.
I, I don't know.
So, so with the reverse nine-on-one, what I was gonna suggest. So on April first, when we send out tax bills, I think what we should do is send out something that is basically like, you wanna opt out of receiving these notifications. Let us know.
Otherwise.
So that we can actually take off contact. Put it in that system.
Yeah.
Start reaching everyone.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I just thought.
Yeah. Can we make sure that we are getting people? Cell phone too, because like Margaret was saying, if there's a landline and the landlines are down, then we're not able to.
Yeah, I know, just looking at your reports that come back after you've sent out one of those messages. We're getting plenty of the emails are right, the texts are right, and it's the, the phone, the actual phone calls because so many landlines have come dead.
Right, right. I, and I mean, I don't believe there's still a ton of people that. Don't have cell phones, but there are a handful.
Yeah.
And, um, and those are the ones that really need to be reached.
So they will receive this notice anyways. I think that's a great idea.
I, I think you also put in there too is the, um. How you, how you call in a emergency. I mean, I'm not saying just nine-one-one. I'm talking about trees down. Or there's no power or whatever. Um, from what I hear, you know, people taking pictures of trees down and putting it on Facebook. Well, that doesn't help at all. You know, I, well, because I, I don't, I don't follow Facebook on towns. I learned that years ago. Um, but when people take pictures of Facebook and, and put it on Facebook, well, the tree now, well. I don't know that.
I know.
You know, you pick up, pick up the phone, nine-one-one.
And if it's that bad, nobody's usually here, right? So, you know, it should go to the highway garage.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm not, you know, your cell phone or whatever if it's.
Oh, nine-one-one. Nine-one-one is the quickest to get ahold of anybody.
Yeah.
So.
It's be on the same one. You know, send it out to any emergency.
Yes, yeah. Trees down, wires down, whatever. Nine-one-one.
Yeah, well, that's, that's, then that's what we should do.
Yeah.
But I agree, there's still people for some reason think that posting it on Facebook.
Yeah.
And then whatever you decide to put out there, our next newsletter, we can include that information in that too. So it's hitting everybody.
Yeah. It's really quick. So, um, I couldn't make the main, but you wanted me to just mention. Um, so first he just says, uh, thank you to John Darrington, Tom Ackley and Pat Lombardo. Um, they're absolutely critical to ensuring we respond to all calls. Including spending more than an hour shuttling the station or leaving it out, having something more formal to point folks to know. So. Thank you to them.
Yeah, I know there's.
I do think that brings up a point though, Dave, would be a, I think this is something we need to figure out. It's prioritizing certain down locations.
I mean, it, it, no, it was just. Overwhelming with all this snow we got and, you know, and trying to get the roads always open. You know, especially the ones that are, 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 other, other end of town and. It just. Yeah, we forget, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's spread out.
And I mean, the main roads is, is, it's simple, you know, you plow, 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 but when it starts coming to. All you gravel roads, you know, he's got.
They're horrible.
He got two or three people to bomb, you know, um. I plowed most of the gravel roads myself. I made. One inch in. And I had to come back as much as I can to make it one, one and a half wide. And then go back out four or five hours later, do it again. Um, Gibbs Road is probably one of the worst roads around here in the winter because. Drifting.
Yeah.
Um, I went out there twice, plowed it. It was perfect.
Yeah.
You know, and then people say, well, this, this is this. So I went out there and, uh. You know, Reedus Farm? Well. What I plowed. Is like. Drifting. You know, for, for us all above it. So you, there was nothing there.
Yeah.
You know, and then you go down farther down to another section. It's the same way.
Yeah.
You know?
That's a route.
Um. But we got it all cleaned up. So taken care of.
I think that the, this storm was not typical for us. I haven't had one like that for years.
Thirty.
Yeah.
Thirty years, yeah.
Um, so I mean, there's definitely gonna be all sorts of things that come out of it.
Oh, yeah.
We, you know, we could say that we could, you know. These are. Did you really?
I, I couldn't believe her opening statement, Paul. She goes, I'm very difficult. Ask my husband.
By the way, you weren't on the sixth, on the eleven o'clock news. They had, they had a young girl in. The tees. We've lost power. And so we're not to have.
Figuring out when you're.
Yeah.
Maybe when you're going down Russell Road, because that's a main road that needs to get done.
Yep.
And then you come after it, check it, make a couple passes. I.
Well, we.
And it depends on the snow. This was a real hot ball.
Exactly, exactly. You know, you, you could go, you could go down one road, you know, and, and plow it both and come back in an hour later. You got eight inches on it, but oh my goodness.
Well, it can stop snowing for twenty-four hours.
Right.
So that's longer than that.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
After lunch, you're not stopping the next day.
Obviously, these are possible.
It is, yes. And, and one will be different.
I think what we, uh, what I'd like to see though is just making sure that there are certain priorities.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Emergency locations, water treatment plant.
Yeah.
Fire, you know, just to make sure those are.
Two questions came out of it for me. Um, one was in an event that's something like this to this extent.
Mm-hmm.
Should we, and I don't know how other towns do it, and if there's, uh, an insurance waiver that's required, but should we prioritize as well? Something like Pat Lombardo or our fire department volunteers who are EMTs, should we be making sure that they're plotted out and ready to be, to respond? I mean, is that?
No.
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 I don't think it's even ethical. And I'm probably sure it's not legal to do it either.
Yeah.
No.
I've, I've talked to a couple of other people about it. You, you don't want to go down that road.
You don't, okay.
Yeah. We should maybe just.
That's fine. Uh, I just wasn't sure. Cause I know at one point we had no one available to respond and I wasn't sure what we could do.
Um, we could use that for recruiting if you wanted.
Uh, well, yeah, right.
I mean, we could make, I'll go out and get them in my four-wheel drive because there's no place I know I can't get to with that.
There you go.
And I would gladly pick anybody up and help them out with that.
Um, a second question that came out for me is, um, when we have a road closed.
Yes.
I talked to Ken, um, Coach, uh, Coach, wow.
Please chief.
Chief Chen. Um, about this as well. Who lets dispatch know that a road is closed so that fire knows?
She should.
Okay.
She should.
Okay. So I know that there was, there was a little bit of miscommunication there because fire was, was, went to respond or something. I don't know.
Because, because it started off with the state police.
Yeah.
You know, then the state police, you know, they had to leave.
Okay.
And, uh, then. Chief came up. She, she sat there most, most, most of the time of they're waiting, just watching the snow.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay, so there is a system.
Yes.
For that though. Okay.
Um.
And I would just say, you know, for my part, I think in the future what I'm gonna do, and I've. Send everyone. Updated contact information.
Yeah.
Because I know you and Adam didn't have each other's cell phones.
Yeah.
So that's definitely something I want to make sure.
Oh, yes.
I thought I connected you better now.
Yeah, really, yeah. Uh, but I want to make sure that we're, you know, it's a text chain or something that everyone's on.
Group text.
Yeah, exactly. So everyone is.
But I can know good once in a while. Cause I hear everything through the paper usually.
We want to have a slideboard on there, that's fine with me, but.
Yeah.
Just making sure everyone's on the.
Have to be careful making decisions on this.
Right.
Yes.
Um, for people that may not have an idea how. Power works or outages, okay? Like for instance, Russell Stage. The whole tree came down. Across, across main power lines. And, um. We can't cut it. Nobody will cut it until a part is off. So what happens then is that. Whoever comes up will cut the power and then you have to wait until the tree comes down. They cut it down. And then they'll come back and they'll put the power back in. Um. The worst part of the whole thing was the situation that we. The area was in with the overabundance of outages. I mean, there's. Places I've been and you would never think. Of it, you know, and all of a sudden you go down one road, you got like fifteen trees coming across.
Yeah.
You know? But yes. If it's, there's a regular tree falling down, it's usually a quick response. But if it's during a major storm like this, it could be like. Two or three days.
Yeah.
Or depending how bad the storm is or what type of storm, hurricane, tornado, whatever, it could be a week or two.
Yeah.
Or it could be like California.
So do we have like a list, like Margaret, I know you, um, Seaway is aware, everyone needs check-ins. Um, is there, did we have something, um, that was like in the works for how to reach out to people who might be alone or not capable of. You know, start a fire in the fireplace or shoveling or whatever they need to do to.
Yeah, or generally, um, those of us that volunteer. You know, we have, we have like sections that we take care of when we call. They call each other and they call me or they call Judy or.
Yeah.
You know, Joanne now. Um, so. It's just, we kind of know.
Okay.
Who lives alone. Who. Would be in a bad situation. Now, like I was worried about Suzie. I couldn't leave my drive. Well, I couldn't get out of my garage.
Yeah. So, but then I couldn't. Then reach out to Chief Jen and have.
I would have to do that because like with Suzie, I had just. I would have to do that because like with Suzie, I had just spoken with her before we lost power, so I knew she was okay, she has a wood stove. Um, which she uses to heat the house, and she was using it to cook on.
Okay.
So I knew she was all set, um. There's. Other people that, well, like Bob Burton on Russell Stage Road, he has a cellphone, so I can reach out to him. Bob Wright, I, there's such a great group of neighbors up here, they all look out for one another.
They do.
You know, um, so everybody checks on everybody.
I just want to make sure that we're not leaving anyone sort of.
Yeah, I know, and I hope. I hope we're covering all of our bases.
And I think that the, that will help the reverse my nine one one reach out to more people will be helpful, but. If there's anything else that COA needs in terms of emergency management.
One of the things that I. And and Suzie does too is uh. The Mennonites, they have a group that.
Yes.
That go out, I know they came and after I fell, they came and they shoveled off my roof from the accident storm.
Yeah.
And they they take care of Suzie.
They take good care of her, yeah.
They did chip nor crop, I mean, you know, they're with the community.
I realize that existed, that's wonderful.
And uh. My contact point was, uh, Dan, what's his last name, Weaver?
Okay.
I think so, yeah.
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 Okay, that's good to know.
Yeah.
I wish I had known, because there was someone in town that reached out to me and I didn't know. Like.
Yeah, I mean, either, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, may maybe if we can get a a list together.
You know, I'm gonna say a list of responders and like you guys, I I wouldn't know how to reach you if I needed you.
Okay.
You know, and I got your number, you pay for her number, so.
Yeah, I know.
But I'm just saying, not in department things, I don't have fire chief's number, I don't.
Yeah.
Maybe interesting.
Yes, and just so you know.
And 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 probably a list of um resources out there, you know, like the Mennonites or or whatever, you know?
Yeah.
Or, hey, I I need this or need that.
And and I'm always available, I will go out with my plow and truck, and I always kind of plow you out, because this storm was heavy, but I will get to your house and bring you something.
That's great.
So, it may be something like.
I would offer that too.
Thank you.
No, I I'd rather coffee to. Out there shoveling, um and then my last thing was, um, Adam said they need more shovels at the fire department, that he said the shovels we're using are ones that you would have bought for your children. To test.
Oh, my God.
So they need, they need, I don't know, um, if there's money in the select board account to grab, you know, a hundred dollars worth of snow shovels or whatever.
That's each two, right, buy them now.
But, um. Just so I can give them the home depot card to. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Um, yes.
We do that, thank you.
Why show them, why don't the? Invest in the snowbore, if it gets that bad sometimes.
Don't.
We have a snowbore.
It may be big enough.
Yeah.
Oh, well, yeah.
I told him the other day, he couldn't even get the snowblower out of there, so. It's in the shit, couldn't get it out.
Yeah, we have to get a number of occasions.
Yeah.
Exactly, you know?
Yes. Oh, my gosh.
That was no.
That's fine, so. Yeah.
For the writing corner.
You're gonna start now, all like every.
Yeah, put it in a corner, not a garden.
Yeah, maybe during the season.
It's good work.
But I'll let Adam know to get the. The part, thank you, so that's, that's all I have on the storm unless you guys have any, anyone have anything else, I think.
I think the thing I was just saying to Kara too was that, um. You know, when I got the group text, um, that was great, um, but it was at eight thirty at night and we were talking about. Um, do people need to come up to the town hall for an emergency shelter, at that point, you're not gonna get, especially seniors, they're not coming out.
Yeah.
They're, they have no heat, they have no, yeah, exactly, you know, so.
Can't get out.
And they can't get out, so I mean, like myself, I I was under like three blankets and.
I was worried about you, I was worried you didn't reach out beforehand.
But there was nothing anybody could do, I mean, we're fine, so, you know, um. So, but I think maybe that's something we should think about.
Yeah.
To plan.
Yeah, and so last time we opened or we offered to open the primary center as a warming spot.
Yeah.
We were able to do that by, I think, five P M.
Well.
Yeah.
Now, you couldn't get in that door if you're like.
No.
Which eight feet of snow in front of it is this high.
So this time we did, we town hall was what.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but last time was like in early February, we had a really intense cold snap. And, you know.
Yeah. And but I will say, I mean, our seniors up here are really. You know. They they just know how to handle things, they live up here in the.
Very independent.
They are, they're independent, and I mean, like Suzie, she's gonna be eighty six. And she just takes care of herself and goes about her business and, no, I don't need any help, I'm fine, and you know?
We're here for a long time, we lived through all the old.
Exactly.
Their work, they used to lose the power a lot more often than we do now, so.
Yeah.
It's it's.
But.
You know.
They certainly are. Already stuck.
Well.
When I was here the other day, we're having a problem with the heat.
Yeah. Six. This this worked out at least.
Well, how how they prepared, it was, there was an issue with the um. Water heater circular or something.
Oh, okay.
Lots of capacity.
All right.
He turned on the circulator costume, so he's gonna show me the button, he said it's relatively easy, he's gonna show me.
Okay.
Do you remember, you know Rita, remember Rita, you know, she passed away?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Very sad, and I remind you, Chris, this was a memory you would have liked about Waver, is that it was Rita's hundredth birthday, and it was COVID. And we got like twenty five cars together, and we had a parade for her.
Oh, really?
And.
Highway, we played fire, police.
The era that she, I forget, was three point fifty's music.
I think so, yeah.
She was out there dancing.
Yeah. Yeah.
She's hot. It was a nice landing.
Well, we got, we got the uh. Sand thing, you know, the bucket.
Yes.
The the sand, and I was going out to refill her bucket. And I pulled in the yard, and there she is out shoveling her block and everything, I think she was like ninety eight.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Well, she's still the talk of the YMCA in Westfield because of the weight she used to be able to lift. Uh, because she lifted the bales of hay on their farm, and so she'd be down there lifting these weights, and the young guys would go, oh, my.
I like it. Oh, Lord, all right, so we're, you have any other heavy stuff for us?
Um. No, I don't, this, that, we're gonna spend for the next week or so, getting rid of snow banks and.
Yeah.
We're not melting them, we're just relocate some of them, you know? Um, they started the, uh, they did it over here at the um library, started doing something over here at the post office.
Okay.
Okay, they're gonna keep on moving, tomorrow their big push is to finish up the transfer station.
Okay.
Now, where are they bringing the snow? Are they just pushing it back or? No, I can doubt, I got all that, Dan.
Yes, it is, no, we we will, we we have, we'll stick up off that, at that yard up there.
Why are you taking this snow out of there for all the years I've lived here, they've never done that, you got plenty of room to push it back, you got the equipment to push it back.
Don't want, I don't want to break the fence, I don't want to break anything over there.
Between the building and the stone wall, you push it out in that field.
No.
They never trucked that out of there before in my whole life. Or the library, you got a huge field here to push it in, I just never seen it, it just seems like a waste of money. And out in the city, push it back.
Uh, if you want that, I'll I'll do that, I'll I'll see where it is then, I mean, but corners gotta be taken care of.
Corners a hundred percent, I'm not saying nothing about I'm talking pushing that back.
Yeah.
They never, they didn't do it last year, they put.
Well, we didn't have.
Almost the fence in the back line was running closer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
I just don't see the expense. Just my personal opinion, that's all.
I have absolutely no opinion on that.
And you got anything else?
No, I do not.
Thanks for. I I know that about seventy two hours, seventy three hours, appreciate it.
Well, what did you name?
I know, I know, my wife did all my snow blowing for me. I don't pay for that, she, she loves it, she loves it.
Wow.
Bought a brand new snow blower uh last year, and.
How romantic.
That's what I did wrong.
Yes.
That's a big sport.
Well, it's, it it it's a cup cadet. And we had an older one, an older snowblower, and I tell you what, I I hate pole starting it, it was electric, but I still want to do it. I pulled this one time, it started up, and we had no power for like, um, only twenty four hours. And she was cursing and cursing, but she went down there and she started up, she said, oh, my God, that was so easy.
Yeah, good.
It's just, oh, good, we need power then.
Well, I'm glad you didn't.
Have a good rest.
Yeah, yes, yes.
I'll be around.
Yeah, um, yeah, I'll text you.
Okay, so good, everybody have a good night. Take care, take care.
All right, town administrator, budget?
Uh, yeah, so really quick, um, so I I read, uh, the county got, uh, some more, some new estimates set. Um, so I'm gonna be meeting Sarah next week to finalize a couple items, PD General takes care of, benefits, et cetera. Um, and then I'll be meeting with the finance committee on March twenty ninth to kind of block things for. At least the time being, there's always a couple things that come in, uh.
Last minute.
Last minute, so for example, we just found out our fuel bids aren't gonna come in till mid May, so we'll have them before mid town, mid town meeting, but we won't have them. You know, um, or whatever's in the annual report.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, so we're, we're doing well on that front.
Um, I talked to K, hold on, Kristen Smithy.
Oh, yeah.
And she said, she asked if we needed her, and I said, not really, because they're like a little bit lower, so we'll call her.
I asked the finance committee if they'd want to steer, I said the same thing, it's only like point five two percent decrease, so we were like, this is pretty much.
Yeah, perfect.
Um, and then the other thing is, uh, I'm gonna be looking at any reserve fund transfers we might need to do with the finance committee in late March, we're done by that time of year, where some.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'll be putting together a plan for that uh in the next week, and then we'll. Um, take care of it on the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Um, grant updates, uh, so I had talked to Dave, uh, about additional books, the paved play space, you can look around. So, um, we're going with that. With that one quote he got for twenty thousand.
Okay.
Um, so we'll figure out. We're gonna have to look around and see, you know, to get what, to make up that difference between the grant and the.
Was it a couple thousand dollars?
It's, yeah, three thousand, so.
Okay.
And where was she going?
Right here.
It's just repaving the the pavement out there.
The.
Basketball.
The, yeah, and then putting the, um, it's putting in the basketball hoops.
Those are about twelve grand or something, about six grand, so.
Yeah, six.
Yeah, they were expensive, actually.
The the bulk of that price is the two hoops.
Okay.
And it has gone up since we approved it originally, I think, we approved it eleven, and then it went to maybe we did like fifteen, and then it went to eighteen, and now it's twenty. Okay.
Um, moving on, uh, so rural and small town development plans, I was just talking about this in the last meeting, submitted a expression of interest for that. Um, for the highway fire facility project, and then also for Shepherd Farm, uh, they've got a underlegalized properties grant program.
Oh, cool.
I don't know if it's gonna be quite the right fit, it's always a challenge for Shepherd Farm, because. It's hard to justify in terms of economic development, but it is a community development thing.
Okay.
Good, so we'll see.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, and then Roselli Dirt Roads, uh, so that project, we're gonna have a couple listening sessions as they're calling them.
Okay.
Uh, so April fourteenth, uh, I believe they'll be at the COA for their lunch.
Yep.
Um, do a presentation there, and then we'll also be doing one twenty fourth here. Um, and then really quick, I just wanted to mention fire chief position, so I know we talked about we're focusing this, um, there's some potential developments in chapter right now, so I'm typing a data report about what's going on on their end and what they're thinking. So, uh, all say is just stay tuned, sit tight. And hopefully we'll have some more information.
What are we looking at, like a joint fire chief?
Potentially, we have to kind of figure out what's going on on their side, so.
Yeah, because they might, the state, they petition the state to keep the other one, there's more time, correct?
That's, uh, that was my understanding.
That's what I was.
They're gonna be, yeah, that's what they're gonna do, but, um.
And usually they don't give up, they're very, very strict.
Yeah, yeah. So, so many more to come on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then in terms of action items, um, oh, sorry, I'll.
No, that's okay, uh, we have the audit services?
Yeah, so, um, you know, some, what's generally recommended is you change up your firm during an audit every five.
Okay.
We had Scanlon for a while, I know they, they, everyone was pleased with their work, um, but I ended up putting out a, a purchase description this fall, we got Roselli Clark and.
Okay.
Um, and they're in line in terms of price with what Scanlon was, so.
Okay, and that's what we budgeted, was, okay.
Yeah. We actually budgeted twenty one thousand, but they, it's plenty, so.
There's, there's a thousand for the. All right, so, um, I would make a motion to, um.
Oh, real quick, I would just say, so they had an option in there to engage their services for, uh, for twenty four and twenty five, I think as well, or twenty three, twenty four as well. Um, I know recently we were doing audits every other year, so I was, I kind of told them, oh, we'll probably just hold off.
Okay.
Um, but I wanted to run that by everyone.
Well, what is, um, the opinion of Sarah and Eric, I guess, if if we should do a year where we're every other year?
I mean, so we had ended up with this bi-yearly, bi-annual.
If that's their recommendation, then I'm comfortable with that, but it's.
I figure it's like a business that should be done every year, my personal opinion.
I, so my thought is, I know nothing about when, how many audits should be done, but Sarah and Eric are professionals and do this for a living, so. If they're, we can save twenty thousand a year, right?
I I get your, the savings, but being in business for a lot of years, working habit, every year they do, it's like. I I would do on, I just feel it, it's, because it can get away from you, if something happens, and I just wouldn't want that to happen once again, that's just my own personal opinion.
Okay. Um, and action aim is just to agree on the twenty thousand for this year.
Okay.
Now, I I I think that, uh.
So I think.
With the, with the, the contract. I I I would be attuned to that.
So let's not go there yet, let's.
Do this year, and then we'll review it.
Oh, all right.
Have options, right, is that, so.
Yeah, that that would not, that not required on that.
No.
Right.
Okay, then, yeah.
They said, they said years two and three are just an option that we're offering same amount each year, twenty thousand.
Okay, so I make a motion and to accept their offer for this year.
This will be your twenty twenty two audit office, uh, audit services, the Roselli clerk and associates, the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Yes, I think that.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Question.
Under action items, sorry, TJ, I forgot to put my name back in there. You've got the paper in the folder. For Owen, so, uh, we also, um. For Owen. So, uh, we also, um. So under action, I make a motion to appoint, um, Lynn Kane as assistant treasurer collector. We had already.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
I.
I.
I came down to meet her. She was, I'm sick.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I wanted to introduce myself. I, I wasn't here. How can I say?
This is just the appointment.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, and then, uh, motion to approve warrant eighteen for payment. That's when we, did we sign that?
What is that?
You decided, it doesn't have to be signed or ordered, but this is just the official one for, uh, motion.
For what? I didn't hear yet.
Warrant fifteen for the last one.
Oh.
Remember you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's seconds?
Second.
On favor?
I.
Um, okay, so St. Patrick's Day, um. We have one police vehicle, one fire, is that right?
Correct.
And then we're gonna take the truck out here. I bought some decorations and I was gonna rent a bubble machine for forty dollars for my.
Party boys?
Party place. Um. I don't know, I need that call. They didn't call me back because, uh, Justin was gonna, he thinks he has some way to hook it up for me so we can rip bubbles out of the back of the truck. Um, so if there's anyone, any kids that wanna join us? Do you have any, any grandkids that wanna join us?
I'll see, um.
Schedule departure time or anything?
Um, Chris is gonna get it.
So we, so we do announce, so you just posted it this week.
Okay.
Um, so I think, let me see, I, I, I.
That's not where the old Kmart was, right?
Right.
Down there.
Yeah.
Josh said.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, Kmart Plaza, our division is parking near the Sears in Kmart, so. Uh, arrival times eight forty five, arrival gate is the north gate, which is D'Angelo's.
Yeah.
Eight forty.
And that street's closed at ten thirty. Uh, and the start time is eleven fifteen.
Ooh, that's a really early to get there. But I think that we have to decorate.
Go to work.
I mean, they're set at eight thirty.
What's not there?
Um, I think that we have to wait and decorate the truck there, but I can, I'll figure that out, cuz obviously we're, we're rounded down. I just need someone to help me figure out how to stick things to the truck without ruining the truck.
I got a pop ribbon gun.
No, that's, no, that's not gonna work.
Oh.
Um, but I'll figure it out.
Works great.
Uh, okay, cool. I think it'll be fun. Um, and then we don't have to talk about the other things, cuz they're not. All right. Do we have to talk about the other thing, Shepherd Farm?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to update you guys.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so this is kind of interesting. This came back from the dead. Um, so we talked this fall about the Conway School doing a student.
You know, it was better than.
They kind of, uh, they looked at the site and it sounded to me like they really weren't that interested and kind of just didn't hear anything.
Okay.
And they came back to us and said, oh, actually, you know, we would be interested.
Oh, great.
Um, and given that, you know, we had that vote, especially kind of meeting, and it kind of sounded like there wasn't a whole lot of appetite to keep those buildings around. Um, you know, it's really more their forte to do kind of the landscape, a trailhead, trails kind of thing. Um, so I reached out to, uh, Dick Gates and Linda, um. They are, you know, tentatively on board, but they wanna be next week to kind of talk about some more of the details. Um, you know, the tricky thing here is even though it's a student project and what, I think what it'll give us is like a really incredible vision of what that site could be.
Hmm.
Um, that we can use.
That's great, yeah.
Forward. It's still seventeen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So the bill price.
So that means they're, you're not touching the building.
Right.
So we're, so you're, you're talking where the people for parking go up and out. Oh, no, just the design.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Cuz I, I get worried about people going there and the viability of that building if they.
Oh, yeah.
Be, you know what I'm saying? It's not really, so.
So this is another thing. This is another tricky part of this. So I, I took the, um, the. Contract, as they call it, kind of proposal contract at the school center. Um, I gave it to Mark and Mark, I know, always says, you know, we, they sign our contract.
Yeah, we don't send yet.
Um, but he had, he had a lot of reservations about what they sent us, some liability stuff. Um, and I kind of, you know, I talked to him about it. I said, well, you know, like really what's the risk here? It's a student project.
Yeah.
Um, so he said, it's, it's really a policy decision for the town. Do we think it's okay, basically saying, you know. Waiving some liability because it's a student project and not, you know.
Well, a lot of those, like if you had something done from the technical schools, like they're building a house down on Mill Street.
Right.
Your insured. When I got out of school, I started working at Strathwater Maintenance. The insurance covered because I wasn't eighteen. Until I turned eighteen. So they have a policy through the schools, most likely, that those kids are covered under liability wise while they're out there working.
Well, exactly, like they'll be on the site doing like measuring and.
It's a good question. I, you know, the, the, the only thing that was, you know, at all worried me was if they went inside those buildings.
Yeah.
So I think, but given that it's a landscape school and we've already talked about how, hey, you know. We're not actually gonna look at ways to repair the building or anything.
Yeah.
I think we can say.
We can write that into whatever we have.
Um, so all right, I'll, I'll talk to Mark about kind of finalizing that. I will say, when I brought that back to. Conway School, they said, oh, whatever you guys need, we're not, you know, like, so they were very receptive.
The. I think it's a less expensive way to start a while.
It is, yeah.
And, um.
Particularly because we weren't able to make grant funding.
Yeah.
You know.
And I've seen someone that worked those kids too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's pretty nice stuff.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I will, I will talk to the conservation commission and historical commission about it at some point next week.
Okay.
Um, you know, there are some reservations from, I guess, some members of the historical commission, so we'll have to kind of come to that.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, okay, so that's, that's the essay and.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
All right. What are some of those reservations? Are they? Uh, kids doing the work for?
It's historical, so it's probably regarding maintaining historical integrity, am I wrong?
Yeah, well, it's just, um, you know, in my mind, the, the town kind of spoke in the building. It's clear there isn't the appetite to invest more and maintain that building.
Hmm.
Um, that said, you know, what, what I did talk about with this oral permission is taking elements in that building. That, you know, the cool architectural details that P D. P. C. documented and building them into a vision for the site, whether it's. You know, trailhead or signage or whatever it is, honoring the history in some way.
Even possibly an open air place to stand and get your stuff packed ready and stuff.
Yeah, we, we talked about a pavilion.
Yeah, pavilion.
But. So it's something, but yeah, but obviously, you know, people are very attached to that building and.
What's horrible?
So anyway, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's always a conversation. So I'll be talking about it next week.
Okay.
And then, uh, so one more.
Maple Lane, yeah.
Maple Lane, uh. So. Uh, so I, I ran our letter by town council, um, wants to be confirmed with Mark that. The town has in fact voted to appropriate funds for. May, maintenance of, or not maintenance, snow removal on private roads back in the seventies. He said, you, you're fine. It's entirely at your discretion to.
Okay.
Plow that road. Um, so I really think it's just a question for the select board because. There, there aren't funds out there for these private roads. They're private roads. There are certainly capital financing firms that'll help, you know.
Yeah.
HOAs, et cetera, figure out how to.
You know the posts around there? I haven't been out there in years. Like, there's gotta be what, eight or nine, maybe?
Yeah, there's.
I, 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 I think it was like seven, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but they can't do anything with the road though. Otherwise, that road cannot be widened.
Why?